This council meeting's been called to go over the proposed general obligation budget and proposals that we have laid out and what the order of business is. I'll give a little introduction here in a minute and I'll turn it over to the different department heads that have proposals coming up on this bond election. And then we'll open the floor for any questions or any comments that you may have. The last meeting we had Monday, we got a lot of good feedback from the citizens that we took to heart and we're working through those issues as we speak. So again, I want to welcome you and thank you for taking time to show up tonight. With that being said, I call this special meeting of the Midwest City Council to order and council members can be excused to go down into the audience if you wish from the horseshoe. Again, I want to welcome you to this discussion, this town hall if you will. And our primary purpose is to go over the proposals that we have before you for consideration on general obligation bond and that election will be in August. We're going to lay out the proposals and the projects that we would like to see and give you an explanation on what it's going to cost you and what our vision is for the city. As you know, or you may not know, I'm a lifelong resident of Midwest City. Served as a police officer here for 31 years. And we've gone through spurts of growth and development and then lulls. Well, right now, we're on a roll. I think you would admit that with all the things that we have going on in the city right now with the development of the Soon Rose Project, the Warren Theater.
So use this one rather than this one, right? This one works? Or does not? Been told to use the handhelds. Thank you, Mayor. Once again, very good turnout. Thank you and know you have other things you could be doing tonight. So thank you for being engaged with your community and the things that are happening here in the city of Midwest City. Thank you, Mayor and council for the support and for having scheduled these meetings. Several months ago, actually almost a couple of years ago now, Mr. Henson had asked some of the directors, some of the department heads to begin to develop lists of capital needs throughout our departments. And Parks and Recreation, a lot of the things that we use for quality of life issues here in Midwest City are aging rather rapidly. So in proposed Proposition Number One, there are six projects: renovations to John Conrad Golf Course, Reed Baseball Complex, additional soccer fields at the Midwest City Soccer Club, a new multi-purpose athletic facility, and additions to Mid-America Park and Town Center Park, which is more familiarly known as the Clock Tower property or the old Bomber Water Tower property. Let's start with John Conrad Golf Course. Beautiful 18-hole facility. It's a 1970 model. Anybody in the room still driving a 1970 model or watching a 1970 model TV? There are some, okay. Anyway, it is in bad need of renovation. The greens are outdated and have shrunk. The irrigation system is a patched together 1970 and 1994 model. Tea to green, we have uneven playing surfaces, turf's that are failing, and the practice facility range, practice range is irrigation has been down for a number of years and is not worth repairing. Bunkers that need to be moved and relocated and a variety of other improvements. That's about four and a half million dollars' worth of improvements to rebuild all the greens, teas, bunkers, and put in all-new irrigation. In addition to that, there's almost a million dollars' worth of new equipment to maintain the golf course proposed. This equipment can be very expensive and a lot of our equipment is literally held together and patched together and is aging rapidly. Some of this mowing equipment can go as high as $75,000 and $80,000 per lawn mower. So it does get pretty expensive to buy a golf course maintenance equipment. Next, we have proposed improvements to Reed Baseball Facility. The proposal here, I'm not going to go into it in depth, but there are posters around the room that kind of give you a little better view up close of what the proposal is. We believe that we can do the entire baseball program at Reed with some renovations. Not a major overhaul, but some renovations will take. The large, high-school-sized field, we'll flip it inside-out and we'll make it into four small fields where you can play coach pitch, kid pitch, and tee ball and play the entire baseball program at this facility. The proposal is some improvements to irrigation, all turf infield's, synthetic surfaces, some drainage improvements, and some paving as well. Next, our improvements to our soccer facility built in the early '90s. There are some areas of this complex that are designated, when it was constructed, were designated for specific age groups. We want to change that and add some lighting and make that area of the complex more multi-purpose and so that you can play a variety of age groups in that area. And we'd like to add two additional fields with lighting as well there at the Midwest City Soccer Club. Next is what we're calling a multi-purpose athletic facility. This facility would be fully synthetic surfaces. We can move, we would propose to move our adult program, softball, flag football that's played here in Regional Park, move it to this facility. And this is a trend across the nation to make these facilities, use the taxpayers' dollars more wisely, and program these facilities heavily. You can see from a close-up on Slide 14, David, of how you can build the outcoves down the foul lines and you can line the outfield for a variety of sports. We would propose to line it for both macro and micro soccer. All ages of baseball, all ages of softball can be played on the same field, as well as we could even line it for lacrosse, which is a rapidly growing sport here in central Oklahoma. Not only is this complex proposed to be multi-purpose and one night you can be playing adult softball, the next night you can be playing tee ball or girls' fast pitch on the same field. So we would propose to program this facility very heavily and also intend to use it as an economic engine for Midwest City. Next, we've recently had a large sum of land donated to us by the Atkinson family that adjoins Mid-America Park, which is a neighborhood park in the area of 10th Street and Midwest Boulevard. The additional land fronts on to Midwest Boulevard and we've master-planned this park and we're proposing to spend about $2 million renovating the park and adding a number of amenities, including sand volleyball, some paved trails, maybe possibly, these are all possibilities, not nailed down, community gardens, fitness stations, as well as an 18-hole championship disc golf course. Then, as I said earlier, the Town Center Park, some people are referring to it as the original Mile Park, would be the old Bomber Water Tower property. We've recently master-planned that property as well and you'll see on Slide 18, kind of a cropped-in view. There will be a greenbelt area around the park. There'll be areas to walk and play your pets, as well as a mall area that connects to Town Center and to Charles Johnson Central Park, and that could be programmed for events and festivals in the downtown area, as well as possibly a splash pad and some small pavilions and other amenities. I think now I'm supposed to turn it over to Chief Norton and he's going to talk about some public safety things.
The next proposition that we'll talk about is going to be the public safety portion with police and fire that's going to be combined to do what we want to do. Major Huff's going to come up for a second real quick and he's going to talk about the animal facility that they're proposed to put into play. But as he's making his way up here, you know, part of what you do, Midwest City's enjoyed for a long time. Major Huff's been here a long time. You know, I've been here 17 years, going on 17 years now, and you know, your fire and police departments always remain at the top. A lot of times, we've had to go other places outside of the city for training. Some of the propositions, or proposals we're going to talk about in Proposition Two are going to help us to stay here at home locally and accomplish these tasks.
Again, I'm Major David Huff. I'm the commander over the Animal Welfare Center. The new Animal Welfare Center proposal is going to be a new state-of-the-art animal welfare center. It's going to have state-of-the-art items like HVAC systems, things to keep the kennels sanitary and safe for, to prevent diseases. This new facility is going to be designed where there's a lot easier upkeep and we're a lot able to disinfect, clean, and our workers can get these tasks completed quickly. It's going to be a nearly 200% increase in the amount of animals that we'll be able to take in, so we'll be able to save more animals, have more room for those animals in this new facility. It's going to be designed to where it's more inviting for the public. It's going to be designed where people can come in and look at prospective animals they might want to adopt, spend time with them, visit with them, and so forth. And there's going to be indoor and outdoor visiting areas where people that want to adopt a pet, a cat, a dog, and they can actually spend time with those animals there. And basically, this facility will also provide better quality of life for the animals that are spending time in the shelter. Where it stands now, we do have a little bit of a crowding issue.
Thank you, David. The next we have with the public safety proposal is the Police and Fire Training Facility, which is going to be just a shell building that's going to be utilized for classroom space. Currently, at this time, the police do some training out on 36th Street at the gun range. We do some training in our fire department. Those rooms are both relatively small. I think David's probably holds about 25 people and ours may hold about 30, and we're maxed out. From time to time, we get classes that we bring in to help offset that cost. They want to invite others to come in. It's really hard to do when we have classroom space that's limited. So this facility is going to be divided down the middle, or it can be one wide-open classroom, whichever one of us had the need for the biggest room. So we're going to share that facility. When we roll into the next for the fire department, we've got to purchase the two fire trucks. With that, we've got a proposal for an aerial truck and another engine. You know, what the sales tax did for us to help move us on to the future with the proposal, when you pass that, was that it was able to help shore up the funding and we're able to provide some money into the capital outlay for future purchases of very, very expensive items. The bond election's going to help us spring forward to make sure that we can follow through with that plan. The aerial truck that we have proposed is just under a million dollars. That's not any thrills and frills. That's the basic cost of an aerial truck with the equipment that's going to be put in place with it. The fire engine is going to be around $800,000. Same thing, no frills and thrills, just what's going to be basic necessities for meeting the needs for the citizens of Midwest City. The last time that we went for a bond election for fire trucks was around in '94 when Chief Bauer was our fire chief. We still have one of those trucks that we use on a regular basis right now, this frontline truck to respond to us. So ESCI, the study we came in and did two years ago, had the recommendation that we get on a 15-year replacement cycle with the equipment. That's when the kind of the life expectancy timeline meets with expenses versus getting something that's of value out of it to replace it with the frontline deal. The next is another Police and Fire Training Facility. This facility is going to be a metal structure building. It's going to have partition walls inside that can be rearranged to set up apartment-style living, our bedroom house, and things of that nature. It's a four-story building. We're going to be able to utilize it to burn in. We're going to be able to make second-story fires, first-story fires. The fire department's going to use it as well to repel off of. Police Department's going to be able to co-inhabitate this with us as well. They're going to be able to do tactical maneuvers and things of specialty nature off that building. Currently, ISO requires us to do two live-fire trainings a year. You know, we've enjoyed the ISO one for a very long time and takes a lot of effort to keep that. We have to go right now to EOC, Eastern Oklahoma County Technology Center in Choctaw, or we have to get our guys cleared to get in on the base and use their facility there. This is going to allow us to do everything in-house, as well as stay up to date on our specialty skills with technical rescue. We have fire department self-contained breathing apparatus. You know, everything the fire department has, has life expectancies. Everything the fire department has is driven by the National Fire Protection Association. Those are mandates of what we should be using, what we have to be using, and there's really not anything that makes suggestions to that. So our self-contained breathing apparatus, while the bottles and everything look good on the outside, they're starting to reach their useful life of it. When that happens, no matter the condition, what it looks like, we're to drill a hole in it and discard it and replace it with new ones. That's going to come at a cost of just around $460,000, $450,000 for us. We expect to get 15 years out of those as well. You know, with the standards, we hope to stay up to date with the standards. We're two standards behind now, and that's acceptable because our bottles are still within date. So hopefully, we won't, with your support on this, we'll be able to change, get those bottles updated. Hose and nozzle replacement, shift commander vehicle, and a mobile breathing air unit. When the crews go out to do a structural fire, it takes a lot of air. We breathe air on a regular basis while we're in what we call the hazardous environment. New changes, two bottles, is 33% is left in the bottle. You're going to have an alarm go off, you're going to have to leave the building, change bottles. That's going to make us go through more of them. Mobile air unit is going to allow us to bring air to the scene of the fire and to be able to fill those bottles without trying to find someone to load them in a suburban or a pickup truck and take them to the station and get filled and then bring them back. So it's going to really help us out. The hose that we have, oddly enough, most of you are familiar with the hose, but you know, our hose has a life expectancy as well. The more you use of it, the more the jacket expands and contracts, the more friction loss we have in there, the more friction we have, which reduces the amount of water that we're able to get out of the hose. So we've been diligent about maintaining those, but we're reaching a point in time where we need to get some updated. Same thing with nozzles. They, you know, getting some new nozzles in there to change and meet the NFPA standards we talked about and getting GPMs to the fire. Fire Station One Headquarters remodel back in 2005. You guys passed a bond election for us to build four new fire stations. We did not build, did do anything to Station One here at 8201 East Reno. This 1976 building's 42 years old. The infrastructure in it's beginning to crumble. It's got the old clay pipe. It runs between the ceilings, between second story downstairs. You know, we've got ceiling leaks over time, so it's time that it needs some attention to get it replaced so that some guys that are living there have some good living conditions and we get all that brought up to date. The last thing we have is the fire station extinguish removal system, exhaust removal system. All of our fire trucks' engines run off a diesel exhaust. Every time a diesel truck starts up, it throws off emissions. Every one of our stations are two-story stations. They either come to the first floor to the, or second floor to the first floor by a pole or slide. Station One has two slides and all the other stations has poles, except for Station Five, which is a ground-level deal. We need to have an exhaust system that hooks up to those trucks. When the trucks start, it starts drawing the exhaust out to the outside air. As I said, coming between floors by pole or slide, those doors aren't always airtight, so some of that exhaust has a chance to travel up into the living quarters. So we're going to capture that air. As the trucks pull out of the station, it's going to hit, right as it goes out the bay, it hits a release and it kicks it off the truck and it goes back. Their full runs on the bay, so when they come back around, they're going to be able to pull up, guys can be able to get out, grab it, run it down the rail, stick it on the truck, and pull back in and reduce our emissions in the station, which in turn helps keep down some of the cancer costs. Next is Ryan Rushing.
Hi, I'm Ryan Rushing. I'm the IT Director. And I've got two items for you. The first one is for police and fire. It is to replace their handheld radios and their portable radios. So the radios that they have currently, they got off of a federal grant, the majority of them, back after 9/11. So they've been around for a while. They're starting to show real signs of wear and they're overdue for replacement. Along with that, it will, along with the radios, there's also a tower, a secondary tower site. Currently, our radios operate off of one tower. This will give them the ability to have increased coverage, both for range, but it'll also give them a redundant site. So in the event we have a disaster, something happens to that tower, they can operate off the backup tower. So the next item is the Public Safety Technology Improvement. And this is kind of a conglomerate of several different technology projects for both police, fire, and 911. And so 911 software is an upgrade to the current 911 CAD system, and this is going to give some needed feature enhancements for all of public safety, namely for fire and for 911. There's also some money in this project for mobile devices that will replace the mobile computer terminals in the police cars and also provide some new equipment for the fire trucks as well. There's a mobile ticket-writing component. We hope that that would make the officers safer because instead of sitting there and writing a paper ticket, they can actually get it done faster and be back out on the street. The last portion of that, you see where it says "Behind the Scenes," that is actually for SAN and servers. Okay? And so a SAN is a large pool of hard disks that provides redundancy, speed, and large amounts of data. That will hook to multiple servers and give them the ability to have failover in case one server goes down, the other one can go up. As you know, data requirements are growing. You've probably seen on the news that the officers now wear body cameras. They also have cameras in their vehicles and of course, cameras here at the city complexes. So the SAN would also provide storage for that large amount of data.
Good evening. I'm Mike Bauer with Emergency Management, and I'll be giving you some information on outdoor warning devices. Here in Oklahoma, we know those as tornado sirens, right? So that's, we currently have 10 sirens strategically located throughout the city, and eight of those came back shortly after the May 3 tornado in 1999. We got a grant and we put, updated our siren system. Those are about 18 years old now, and so we're needing to do that again. So what we're proposing is a different type of siren. The new sirens will be a type of siren that will project the sound in all directions, Omni-Project Sirens. And the old ones would rotate around, so the only time you'd really hear it very good is when the horn would be pointed in your direction, but they rotate 360. These project 360 all the time, so a much better system. We're proposing that we put these on concrete poles. The old ones are on Type 2 utility poles and they, you know, with high winds and age, they can be very brittle. I guess the last thing I would say about these sirens is they're, they have the capability to do, we can send out siren, the well, I guess you would call it, or we can send out a pre-recorded voice messages on those sirens as well. But the grant itself is for a little over $360,000. We were very fortunate to get about $100,000 from the state of Oklahoma to help supplement this. So the project really was about a $460,000 project, but we got some grant money to go along with that. Thank you. I appreciate you telling me that. Yes, that's right. We, out of the, I mentioned those sirens that we got back in '99. We actually got eight of those. So back about seven years ago, we obtained two additional sirens. So they're newer and in better shape than the original ones. So what we will do is we will take two of those sirens and repurpose those and make So what we will do is we will take two of those sirens and repurpose those and make them a part of the group. So we're going to go from 10 sirens to 12. So we'll, we'll have some additional capabilities with having the, having 12 sirens.
The beauty of my job is I get to go from fun and game stuff to real serious stuff like streets and infrastructure to deliver water and collect sewer. Next proposition that we're proposing to put before you in August would be $15.9 million worth of residential street rehabilitation. We spent some money six or seven years ago and surveyed, with a firm, surveyed the entire city, a scientific survey. And one of the things that were surveyed about our services in the city were some of our, the quality of our streets. And one thing that was very revealing to us in that survey was, we did learn from that survey what was, what the most important street was in our city. And I'm sure you're probably curious what that was. It's the one in front of your house. And so we never really had looked at it like that before, but it is difficult to keep up with, with, we do have quality roads in Midwest City compared to a lot of communities, but it is difficult to keep up and maintain those with the regular operational budgets. So we went out about two years ago. Our street department supervisor, he drove every street in the city and took copious notes and estimated repairs in every block. So the easiest way to explain this, if you're curious about what is proposed to be repaired, there's a large map on the south wall. You can walk over there, find your area of town, your neighborhood, and we have highlighted all the streets that we are proposing to prepare, to repair or rehab as part of this proposition. On Felix, near Country Estates Grade School, just a little bit, about a mile south and a little bit west of us right here, is part of some of the original infrastructure that delivers potable water to the homes in some of the older parts of Midwest City. There are large underground concrete storage tanks. Most people don't know what is at that location. They're primarily fed by well, our well system here in Midwest City. Those old concrete underground storage tanks, most of them were built in the late 40s and early 50s. If any of you have ever had concrete cellars and, and concrete pools, you understand with the clay soils in Oklahoma and the shifting clay, you do get fractures and, and that. And we've, over time, patched and patched. We have some of them that we've experimented with vinyl liners, and we still continue to have leaks develop in those. So we're proposing in Phase One, as part of this proposition, that we build one above ground, one large above-ground storage tank that you'll see in the photo on the screen behind me. And at a future date, we'll, we'll try to leverage that for funding for an additional above-ground storage tank in Phase Two.
Let me add, that booster station is rather unique because it actually provides a backup system in the event that we were to lose our main water source, which is from Lake Thunderbird. We own a, a part of the water rights of Lake Thunderbird. So if there were ever a problem with that main distribution line from Thunderbird, we would have the ability to continue to provide water service to everybody in the community as a result of having that booster station in capacity. It goes along with the booster station and also our, our other operating water structures. So it's a, it's a tremendous asset that we have to take care of. In fact, we have had a trial or two where we have had a water line problem in Thunderbird, and we have to serve the city through the booster station. Nobody didn't do any difference. Coming up now is Greg Niedel, who is the city's financial advisor. Greg has been a financial advisor, municipal financial advisor since the early 80s. And has worked for us since that time. Before that, his father worked for the city as a financial advisor. He has a, has a long, long relationship with Niedel. They have a long relationship with the city, the city's financial situation.
Thank you, sir. And yeah, I appreciate that. And somebody's made a comment, you've been around a lot, and I said, yeah, because you've been doing a lot of financing, a lot, moving forward. But what I'm going to do is just hit the highlights of what, why would these, the propositions are structured the way they are, and then how we're going to pay it back. That color-coordinated sheet that you have that is up there, or go back to that one. We have to put the propositions according to the statutes in particular groups. You can't mix and match. You can't put public safety with water. You can't put, you know, different aspects of, you can't put streets with, with water projects or different things with public safety. You have to break those down according to statute. So that's why we have the four propositions that we're putting together that will be voted on. So what we're going to do, I'm going to go just briefly with, we'll skip that next page and I'll talk about the bond overview. What happens is when you have the election, the bonds are sold. And we're going to sell these in series because what the city did, what the council wanted to do was try to keep a millage cap. You have different taxing entities that overlap you with, with property taxes. And we'll get to that list here in just a minute. But the city looked at a way that they could fund most of these projects or all of these projects and issue them in series so we keep a limitation on how high the city's sinking fund goes. That is just our particular sinking fund to pay off debt. Cities in Oklahoma cannot, we're one of one state in the nation that cannot use property taxes for operations and maintenance of the city. It strictly can go for this type of debt. So that's what they looked at, that we've got sales taxes and everything else that we do issues with. But this is utilized for these types of improvements all across the state and all across the country. We're going to, if we vote them, we'll sell the bonds and we'll pay it over, pay it back over a 25-year timeframe. And that is providing, they do pass. If not all of them pass, we'll sell whatever does pass. We'll get into the market, lock in a fixed rate, and the money will come to the city, and then that way they can proceed with the projects. The council will actually prioritize because, like I said, we'll probably issue these over two or three years to keep that sinking fund levy at 10 mils. The next page gives you an idea of the fact that we're not really a big participant in your property taxes. You have, you see these various entities. The school districts historically are the highest. You have us, Oklahoma County, Rose State, and then you have a total millage. If you look at the city of Midwest City, you can see that we have not really tapped into the, the ad valorem tax base for quite some time. It gradually goes down, and that's the way these bonds will also be. The highest levy will be the first year that these are issued in the following tax, fiscal year. And then they stair-step down over time. The reason is, like in your millage, I mean, excuse me, in your house payment, when you pay that, you pay, at the beginning, you pay a smaller amount of principal and a larger amount of interest. Geo-bonds are not like that. You have to collect the same amount of principal due every year, so you have that high interest on the first, and it starts to drop off. So you can see that's what we have as far as taxing entities. I know some people are in the Choctaw School Districts. You can look at it and get some information, and you can probably figure out what you're looking at over that. But those are the tax trends. Our bond issue, we tried to boil it down in the most simplistic way. And what this chart tells you is for a 50, 100, 150, 200, 250,000 dollar home, that is on the assessor's rolls of market value at those amounts. Now, one of the things that normally transpires, not all the time, but most of the time, your assessor's market value is not what you could actually go and sell your home for or what you think you could. It's usually lower, and you can find that on your tax statements. They calculate the assessed value, and that's the taxable value. And that goes through a formula and less home set exemption. And then we base the millage, that's dollars per thousand, of net assessed valuation, and we broke it down into a monthly cost because most people pay their property taxes in their escrow account in a monthly payment. This is what, this would cost for this particular bond issue, the first year on a monthly basis. For, I used, did it last time, $100,000. The net assessed value is $10,000. That person is going to see a $7.92 increase in their house payment each month for the first year. Now that will go down over time. Every single year it will drop. Also, if, when our tax base grows, that is, the city of Midwest City has a taxable valuation of about $335 million, I believe, currently, which that has grown over the years. Every dollar that grows, it reduces this particular payment for each person in there because as our tax base grows, it's distributed over a larger base. So in essence, that's the short of it. That we would be looking at a long-term fixed rate issued over two or three years, so we'll try to keep that 10 mil levy cap from the city standpoint. Now, other entities, if they issue or drop off, your total tax bill will fluctuate. It always does. But that's to give you an idea of what we're looking at. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have on that, but that just sums it up.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that's kind of, it's kind of like drinking from a fire hose. Pardon the pun, that's supposed to be. Again, these projects is just not a wish list that we just picked off. These are projects that we have identified as projects that would help us move this community forward for the next 25 years. We shouldn't have to address any of this for another 25 years and put us on firm footing for growth and development. There's a couple of things that are not identified in this, that hadn't been talked about. And, and some of the questions that I've gotten is, well, why do we need a baseball facility? You know, why do we need a state-of-the-art baseball facility? Any of you guys got grandkids or kids playing sports? Okay, I did. Most of us did at one time. It's a quality of life issue, but it's also an economic driver for this community. On any given Saturday or Sunday, you got kids playing baseball. And you've got at least one set of parents out there, if not two sets, and a set of grandparents. And once they get through, they're going to go eat somewhere. Or if little Johnny or little Jane forgot a piece of equipment, they're going to go to our academy or our Dick's Sporting Goods and buy that equipment. So not only is it a quality of life issue, it's also an economic driver for our community. The city of Woodward, several years ago, built a huge Little League and Division II baseball facility in their town. Just about everybody in the Panhandle in that area goes to Woodward to play Terminus. And at any given time during the weekends, during the summer, during baseball season, their population grows 14,000. Everybody knows where Woodward is. That's a fairly substantial increase for Woodward, Oklahoma. Plus two, they had the vision to build a Division II baseball complex. Well, a lot of the junior colleges, the community colleges out in the Panhandle in that area go to Woodward to play their Terminus because they had the vision to do that. It's a nice facility, well-maintained. That's what we want to bring here. We want to push this vision so we can continue to grow as a community. It's vitally important. Right now, we've done a very poor job, and I'm not throwing rocks at anybody, of keeping up with the Joneses as far as our baseball and sports facilities go. If you go straight east out on the Indian Meridian, Choctaw built a million-dollar complex. It's a beautiful place. And they're, and basically drained us from all of our youth baseball. We've got another large facility to our south and more. And of course, Edmund has large facilities as well. So we need to get back in the ballgame, so to speak, and, and build another, a facility that people want to come back to. The public safety issues, it's just a given. Ryan talked a little bit about the body cams. That eats up a lot of storage space. The body cams, and when we download those onto the servers, that's a badly needed project that you'll never see personally, but we have to have it so we, supervisors and what have you over at the police department can go back and get that data out, not only to protect the citizens, but also to protect the officers. The training facilities, the more we can be self-sufficient as a city, the better off we are. We don't have to rely on Tinker, or we don't have to rely on EOC to go train because sometimes those facilities may not be available. Plus two, we keep those assets in our jurisdictional boundaries. They may be over here training, they get something happen. We don't have to recall them from Choctaw or Tinker. They'll be right here and they can get to the scene a lot quicker. Again, these are not just wish list items. These are items that we feel like we need to, to obtain and build to move this community forward. The street repairs just goes without saying. Now, what if anything, now these, we haven't voted on it yet in, in council, but we, as Greg pointed out, we will prioritize these proposals. And they will show up in either four or six proposals on the ballot. Each proposal stands on its own, meaning that each one can either vote, be voted up or down, depending on how we split it up. The more likely scenario I foresee is it'll be public safety, street repair, parks and wrecks, and water infrastructure. It could get divided up even further than that, depending on what it is. Getting back to our needs, our animal shelter was built in the early 80s. And we've taken a lot of heat over the last several years on the state of our facility, and rightfully so. It's not a state-of-the-art facility. It doesn't provide a welcoming atmosphere for people to come in and look at animals, to adopt. Is that is the goal now, is not to euthanize, but to adopt these, these animals. And we are, although we're at an 85% adoption rate at our facility, it could go higher. And that's our goal within a state-of-the-art facility. So with all that being said, do you have any questions of us? Yes, ma'am. So our TV audience can hear as well.
So for the animal shelter and the two police fire training, where are they supposed to be located?
Well, that's a good question. We had an idea of where we wanted to put the animal shelter until our first meeting. And then a gentleman brought up some very good points that we had intended to maybe put it over here in Regional Park where the old softball fields are. And he pointed out that that's park, and he didn't want any buildings in that park. And, and we took that for granted. So right now, I don't know. We've got several possibilities, but what we're going to have to do in the planning stage of that is to identify a spot because I believe, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, that location has to be identified when we come to you in August with the proposal, the exact location. Yes, Steve? Oh, I'm sorry, is there anything else, ma'am? The fire, the same thing. Well, right now, we're looking at the old Fred Myers Ballpark as a location for those training facilities. And more than likely, that's where they'll be. Yes, Steve?
I know that you're limited on space and locations in the city for the animal shelter.
I appreciate it, Steve. And again, that's a, that's a good point. Now, why are we bringing it out from 36 where it's currently now? Well, the animal groups that we have worked with over the last several years have pointed out that they want that facility centrally located, again, to facilitate adoption. If you ask one out of five citizens in the city of Midwest City where the animal control shelter is right now, they couldn't tell you. And if I hadn't been a cop here for 31 years, I wouldn't be able to tell you because I never go there. So they want it, and rightfully so, centrally located where it can be easily identified and people can go there in a friendly environment to adopt animals because that is the goal now. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
On the point of noise, I do understand that, but like he said as well, the animals will be housed overnight inside, and so that kind of limits the sound of noise. I think the issue with it being out in almost Spencer is that it's an out-of-side, out-of-mind issue. So, people think the Midwest City Animal Shelter is actually the Oklahoma Animal Shelter, which is in Oklahoma City, which is in Dell City. And we need to have it here because it is a growing problem in Midwest City and the outline communities, and people need to know it's here. And also, to raise the level of adoptions. And if we are going to keep contracting with Choctaw and Tacoma Park, we need to have something that's a little more central and accessible to all of those communities as well.
Thank you.
That kind of goes along with the ability to adopt the animals. Where it's at, there's not a lot of traffic out there, and this will bring in worrying to focus for adoption, a lot of much higher adoption rate.
Yes, ma'am.
We just recently moved here from another state, and our animal shelter in our capital city was right on the main business street. And the city gave up the tax that they could have gotten for putting a business there and placed that right front and center so people go by it and then they have a sign where they could put animals' pictures up, you know, so that as people drove by, they were aware that there were animals there, they could see the pictures. They were open on weekends for adoptions, and they just made it, it had a very high, high adoption rate.
And that's our goal. You know, we've, our learning curve has been at 90 degrees for the last year and a half on this, on this issue. And you're absolutely right, out on 36, out of sight, out of mind. And we want to bring it to the forefront of our city and have a state-of-the-art facility as we need to have for a city our town, our size. Yes, ma'am.
Are you mainly looking at strictly just plots of land that nothing is on? Or we have a lot of areas, and we say they're just parking lots, that nothing's being done with because whatever business it was has went on. Example, where the old Walmart is, now it's rental. Big parking lot over there. Anthony's and Sooner and Reno, big, huge parking lot, just sitting.
Well, the problem with going in existing areas is that it's owned by somebody. And when it's owned by somebody, that somebody takes a great exception to the government coming in and saying, hey, we're taking your land. And I really don't want to be a part of that, to be quite honest with you. But we do have areas in town that we own or we could obtain fairly easily that we can place this. Again, we're just going to have to get, get the maps out, start looking and finding a place where we can facilitate it. And just like I said, once this bond issue comes out on the ballot, we have to have that identified. So, everybody will know exactly where it's at. And again, we're taking the advice that we got the other night and the advice that we're getting tonight, and we'll go compile a list of places that we can do that. And also, just for your own information, that we're also restricted somewhat because of Tinker Air Force Base and the airport protection zone and the level of occupancy that area may have during the day. So, we have to be cognizant of that not to violate those rules as well, so. Any, yes, sir?
What's the time right here? Because I've heard it's on February 2nd.
August.
On Ju-, August?
We're going to be coming-
So, we've got a short, tight leash here. I think, I mean, if you ever have some more discussion about that, and you guys have not voted and said, drop dead, this one's on there.
Well, we have set this as a target date, Fred. Because of everything else going on, we want to get this identified, well, we've identified it, and we want to get it voted on and getting, moving down the road.
Where's, I'm open, is this open discussion?
Yes, sir. That's why I'm saying-
So, where is the facility you've identified, a building for a lease of four hundred seven thousand, I forgot, twelve square meters, but you didn't say where that's going. You said you've got fire training. Where's that, where's that problem? Where are we going to do that?
More than likely, and more than likely, it will go over there by your neighborhood in the old Fred Myers Park. Fred Myers would go away.
What happens to Fred Myers Park?
Those ball diamonds will be taken out.
That seventeen acres, give or take?
Give or take.
For that, for those two facilities?
Yes, sir.
And how often do we go, do we utilize, are we, are the fire police need to go five days a week training?
They very well could.
I'm just asking, I'm just-
They very well could. If we had those facilities-
Right now, we'd send somebody fifty weeks, these guys are going off, out of town.
No, 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 okay. The fire department has to have two live burns a year.
Okay.
Have to have. So, when those, you know, we have three platoons and firefighters. So, several times a year, we have to send those platoons off-site to another place to do their live burns. We won't have to do that if we have the facility in-house. Plus, too, we can also increase the number of times they get to practice that skill because it is a perishable skill. Also, with the police department. Police department has to go other places or identify other old buildings that they can go in to practice their SWAT tactics. And again, active shooter is a big thing right now. There's not a lot of places that people allow the police department come in and tear stuff up. This would facilitate that training ongoing as deemed necessary by the commanders of the police department. So, will it be in Operation 24/7? No, Fred, it won't.
No, I'm asking, I was getting to return on, I'm getting down to the point of what's the return-
The return on your investment is you keep those assets right here in town.
Is it going to be cheaper for us?
Yes, sir.
Is it going to save the taxpayers? And then, where's, there's that lady right over there, first one, brought it up four or six weeks ago, asked for that project right over there, and I was, I wanted to find out why you were doing what you did because that is the question. We can set this in our labs, but how do we go forward? Revenue, what's the revenue to pay for all this? That's the thing there, after five years, everything, it's like the fire department over there, I used to work in that place, throw that boiler and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, it's going downhill after five years, 10 years, 15, all this stuff.
We'll have to maintain it, Fred.
What's our revenue? And a lot of this, they identified all the stuff that-
But, again, having it here in our town, not having to send crews and put miles on trucks and cars to send them out of town to do this training, that's the first savings. The second savings is that the less, or the more reliable we are on ourselves, the less reliable, we don't have to rely on other entities to provide us with those areas to train. That's another savings.
What other cities use this though? Spencer, for example, Harrah?
Only at our discretion. And sure-
I understand that you'll be a charge facility, we can make an offset, we can help offset that.
We could charge them, sure, we could charge them.
Are we going to be on an offset that, whatever you call that golf, frisbee or whatever it is, are we going to, how are we going to offset, bond with some of the companies behind us?
Okay, Fred, the disc golf, what you're talking about. Again, until we started talking about some of this stuff, we didn't realize how big of a following disc golf has. That's another thing, just like youth sports, which you're a big advocate of and always have been, just like youth sports, that's going to bring in folks for tournaments and stuff. The offset of that would be where they eat, where they even stay for tournaments. So, it's give and take.
Well, you know, I'm saying, but, you know, we're just going to come back to revenue and like that, but what my point apart of was, was that field behind us, practice, they can't find practice field, if you don't completely do away with that thing, I mean, watch the kids, we've had the discussion, they can't, if you go up to the school grounds, they can't go to school grounds, it's locked up. Tell them to go up, I watched the kids, by the time I turned around, I was going to take a picture of them out on the street, on the corner, in empty lot, playing ball. They can't come down to that place to play ball.
Fred, not to be argumentative with you. I don't like to argue with you.
I'm not an argument, I'm just going to use a little speed.
But conversely, you know, we've also had the discussion about the lights and the noise and everything else that you have to deal with as a result of that ballpark being in the backyard.
Mayor Dukes? Mayor Dukes? Can I add something here? Fred, one of the issues that, all, well, all these issues, especially with the police fire, the ballpark, the location of animal welfare, is we're trying to figure out the best place to serve the citizens best on property we already own so it keeps the cost down. And I want you to think about this. If, I think from listening to the mayor right now, the regional park more than likely won't be the place that the animal shelter goes. won't be the place that the animal shelter goes. Think outside the box. If we leave that park completely open and don't fence it off like it is right now, and I agree with you a hundred percent about open ball fields, you and I've had this discussion, there would be no reason that that green area in regional park, after all the softball and all those leagues and everything is moved to the other location, that regional park couldn't be the park that you're talking about. Someplace for kids to go if they want to play baseball and not be in a league. Because we don't have that right now. And that would be, in I, in my opinion, that would be an ideal place to put up a couple of backstops, a couple of extra soccer goals and let, and just leave it open, period.
And actually, that's already happening now, Fred. I mean, in, in the fall, when football starts, mo, a lot of the little league teams practice over there in regional. And, and like Pat was saying, this will just expand that by taking those ball fields out. You know, uh, I agree with you, there's not a lot of, not, not a lot of space for kids to go, but, and we've had that discussion, but, um, we're just trying to get the best fit for the areas that we do have. So any other questions?
Can we just stay on that, can we just stay on that subject for just a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's a really pretty picture of Midwest City Soccer Complex. And I can tell you from my experience being there that they absolutely need those fields. The problem is, when you put in that second field up, uh, what's north of that picture there, that's a, that's a gra, that's a grassy area for parking, overflow parking. If they hold a tournament at that complex, where are they gonna park?
Good question. And I'll have to defer to, uh, Mr. Sullivan. Parking is an issue up there, and, and it has been for eons, especially if we get a big tournament going on. I, I, right, right now, I can't tell you.
So just, just, just stay on that train of thought. You said these are the needs to have of the city. Are those fields there the needs for the city or is that the needs for the complex? Because they're two very different things.
Well, actually both. I, I mean-
I, we might disagree on that one a little bit.
Well, no sweat.
That's a little bit of a private organization right there, even though a 501(c).
Yes, sir.
But you're paying to play there.
Yes, sir.
We just talked about the, um, the fields. To get kids in that complex, you need them playing when they're five years old, six years old, seven years old. Granted, some of them start out in that complex and move on to other complexes, but there's not enough kids in this community that are out there because we don't have the fields or the resources or the parents or the volunteers out there to help. We need fields like the park right here. That club is divided between competitive academy and rec. Rec does not practice at that complex. Rec practices in the parks, in the community, at the schools, if they can get in the schools. There's nowhere for them to go. If you go look at the fields in the park, right across from that complex?
Mm-hmm.
You've got goals that are offset from each other. It's not even a regular soccer field. The best they can do is practice on goal. They can't scrimmage, they have to go to the complex to scrimmage.
Well, again, I would throw at you, we've got to utilize what we have to the best of our ability. And, uh, uh-
What you see there was the rec, rec condition.
I, I believe that, they should be here talking about it. Um, in the park right now, you have two light poles in one of those fields. That is begging for a kid to run into one of those light poles while they're practicing rec. And I know that because I've taken a high school team out there to play. That's an unsafe condition. The goals themselves are unsafe, we don't need anything else unsafe in the parks.
If I can get those, those goals should, should be, uh, they were, when the complex was remodeled in nineteen ninety-four, uh, those, we had spare goals and they were just placed around at random in different places, uh, around towns.
Whi- which goals are you talking about? The ones in regional?
Outside of the complex. Outside of the complex, you've got a, you've got a field, um-
Those, those goals are almost, they're very rarely, uh, most people now bring their own pop-up goals to, to, to practice in the right room, sometimes, so.
And you're exactly right, that is, those are the rec players.
Those goals need to go, you might want, you might need to-
But you need, if you're gonna take those away, what you need to do is you need to provide those kind of soccer fields, not those, cause that, I mean, you got a rolling hill there, um, that is not a conducive, uh, environment for, for rec soccer. I mean, if you want to grow it, and I, and I agree-
It's just open to play, right? It's just open to play, so, uh, we've got all the, you know, persons, it was reasonable, right? And, uh, probably, we have, uh, South East Sports, sort of, we had, uh, so that-
I'm not saying, I'm not saying get rid of them.
... place there to create some sort of high quality type of practices. I'm not sure what the question was.
Right, and, and you're absolutely right. I'm not saying get rid of them, I'm saying improve the conditions out there so that they can scrimmage out there. You can't take a team out there and scrimmage.
Whether it's, if, if, sort of, I don't know, if, if all of these, those, in areas where we can learn, softball, tennis, or, 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 it could be tough, open space, it could be used for any type of activity, also frisbee around, or, uh, small children, or , or, 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 I don't, I don't say, I don't think it's land or, 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 right, it's, it's , you know, but we have a variety of places around Midwest City that has, that has land and you can just throw up, go pop up goals.
All right, I guess what I'm asking is, outside of that soccer club, which has been here since nineteen seventy-eight?
Yes, sir.
There is no other place to, to get a soccer field, a, a league soccer field in Midwest City for anybody else to practice that isn't a member of that club? That's where. Don't you think it's time for us to start looking at that kind of stuff? And I'll tell you why. High school soccer. Where did Middel rank this year for high school soccer? I'll tell you that the boys at, at Dell City were third, bottom in their division. The girls were last.
Which should, uh, 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 program. All the programs up rate to an existing facility, as well as the multi-purpose facility, would also be a facility to apply micro, micro soccer.
I'm excited about the multi, multi-purpose facility, I'm just worried about what the costs are gonna be to those that want to use it. Cause I think that's a great idea, I'm just worried again about the costs. Because the, this is, this is Midwest City, we're not Edmond, we're not Norman. We, we have a different kind of population here when it comes to incomes and that kind of stuff. And I think that-
I think you'll find that the, the quality of the programming that we currently have in Midwest City becomes, soccer is very high quality, a very low price. I, I coached many, many games there myself, and went through the entire program, I mean, leadership, West City Soccer Club. I'm very, very into, it's very high quality, a very, very low price, so I don't, I don't know, sure. If they have, if they have the level of competitive type programs that they have in Edmond, or , or, or Yukon, and some of those areas, some of the Norman, no, we don't, there's, there's a real problem.
What I'm saying is it's not enough. It's not enough. And the only way that you, that you're gonna get more kids in that club is to have facilities outside of that club or something else where other, where other coaches, rec coaches, volunteer coaches, parents can get out there in the backyard and kick a soccer ball around with their kids. And I'm, I'm, I know I'm talking soccer, I'm a soccer coach, but it's no different than softball, baseball. If there's no, if there's no halfway decent facilities out in the community where they can go and play, you're not gonna fill up that club. And that ultimately goes to the high schools.
That's what we're trying to facilitate.
Could, uh, for time's sake, there's a young lady right behind you that's got a question.
There's a, there, there's also a request, uh, for an indoor walking track. So at what point do we cut it off? Well, the, the mall, what, so, um, we're, we're, what we've done is we've identified the reachable goals that we can reach and, and, and the, the things that we need to do right now. Those are considered above and beyond, if you will. You know, and if, if we identify the funding and identify the area we could put that in, certainly we, we've facilitated. Ma'am, we do that all the time. We're constantly in search of those types of folks that would come in and do that. Chief, Fred, chief wanted to talk to you about-
Return on investment?
Yeah, just one thing that, that, uh, I thought of was return on investment, I think, that, um, you know, David, I, the way that police and fire department work, we have training classes that come in, institute, institutions, whether it's be someone to complete our investigation, we have our fire investigation, we have arson one, two, development, charter one, two, three. We're able to, we're able to, our departments for hosting that.
So in other words, um, it may have a class that costs three hundred dollars per student to get enrolled in. If we have a facility that's big enough to hold a larger enrollment, the more free slots we get for that. So that's kind of in a way of soft dollars to get returned for investment. And we don't have to pay the travel, the meals, uh, and the lodging for those people to go other places to receive that kind of training. So, you know, we have an arson class that some of our guys will have to go to. It cost us an average of twenty-four hundred dollars. We have a burn building, we got classrooms side by side, we're able to host something like that, they're able to go out and light the fire, they're able to come in, do, it offsets us drastically, uh, for that training that we're gonna have to be able to receive. Well, again, like I, like I said, right now, the location would be in Fred Myers Park or where that, I mean, that could change. No, sir, we don't.
Hey, Fred, you know what the, you know what the purp, but you know what the purpose of this meeting was tonight? To let people like you tell us, give us some input. There are other locations, the city manager shared with me a couple of them. That's what we're asking for tonight, is input. And I promise you that we're gonna take the input that you guys gave us, the people from the animal shelter, and we're gonna come up with what is the best location, that the least amount of people are gonna be mad at us, and, and just, and so that we can get it passed. Because everything we need here, everything that we're presenting, we need. So it doesn't make sense for us to put something out there that half the city's gonna be, I can't believe they've done that. Trust us. In, in, in-
We do.
It's not going to. It's not going to.
We, we can't afford to push, I mean, I, I told a lady the other night, Fred, that we can au, we can what-if ourselves into, into total paralysis. Okay? We do not want to do that. We've identified the needs. Now what we're, what we're discussing is where to put them. And, and, and we will work that out. Fred Myers may go away, you know, I don't, I don't know. That's the identified spot right now. I agree with you, there's not enough places for kids to play. We've got twenty-seven parks in Midwest City, Fred, that we've maintained. So that's kind of an unfair statement. And, and we're fixing to add two more if this passes. And Mid-America Park's a big one. It's bigger than Regional, actually. So, I, I, you know, I get it, I get it. I grew up here. I used to get on my bike and go to Eastside. Well, where I played ball at Eastside, the school sits right now. So, uh, I, in, in soccer, my son played soccer. But they just got out there in the middle of Regional in, in practice. So we id, we get it. And, and we will try to do the best we can with what we have. I think that's what all of you ask of us, right? Yes, sir?
Well, we do, and it's getting us caught up to the new standards. So we're two standards behind on NFPA standards. So there's a new one fixing to come out the end of this year. So it's gonna get us up to the new standards that has the more learning alarms going off when your air reaches low, when someone's not moving, those things. It's gonna be up to the best of the best with the standard.
So that, if David will flip back to that, the front, first slide, you'll see that with the burn facility, um, there's, on the far left-hand side up there, there's a roof prop that's cut. Um, you're gonna be able to do room searches, not every day will there have to be live burns. Um, and then as well, inside that structure, it's a steel structure, it's actually Conex boxes on that one built in, but the interior walls will deteriorate and we can just put new panels up. So the, the cost of the keeping it up, Fred, will be very, very low, uh, minimal. And then they'll have, um, you know, off the side, you've got the repelling, so you're exactly right, we'll be able to host classes for repelling, for all kinds of stuff there that others can use.
Hey Bert, Bert, hey Bert, chief, where's the closest, where's the closest place like that to us right now?
Choctaw.
They, is it just as good as this?
Um, they're not the Conex boxes, theirs is about, uh, ten years old and they spent, yeah, theirs is about ten years old. It's very, very similar, just the outside of the structure looks different. But it's gonna have the same principles, repelling. It's corrugated, but it's a, it's not Conex boxes. It's got a sprinkler system that you can hook up to, it's got the repelling, it's got the second story, uh, uh, and the basement fire, you know, props in it. This one will be better than theirs because we've got a divider to rearrange the rooms so that our people don't get muscle memory. And now that I go to this door, go to the right, then go in, go to the left, we can rearrange it to keep their skills sharp on, on which way to move around a building.
Uh, we looked at that, actually, that was the preferred spot. But it's kind of hard for firemen to play without water. And we don't have, you know, and they gotta put the wet stuff on the hot stuff and we just don't have the water supply out there to do that. It's all well. But we actually, I mean, that's immediately what came to mind, but, uh-
Well, it, it, it also puts, puts our resources on the far, farther, far northern edge of the community and, and, uh, uh, the folks on, at Twenty-Ninth and Hiawassee wouldn't appreciate that as much as, uh, if they had to travel all the way from Thirty-Sixth Street, so.
Any other questions? Yes, Fred?
Fred, you only get three questions.
Fred, Fred, really?
Three. I'm a, Fred, I'm gonna stop you, I'm gonna stop you right there. Okay, I'm just not gonna let you go there because, cause that's not what happens. The golf course revenue stays within an enterprise- The golf course revenue stays within an enterprise fund which funds the golf course. None of those, none of, none of those revenues from the golf course go into the general fund. They all go to support the operations of the golf course. All the tournaments? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, and if we didn't, and. And if we didn't have those tournaments, it would, it would be a lot uglier situation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes, that's correct. You're, you're on the right correct, you're on the right page. No, not. And, and we do to the extent that we are able to. We keep falling behind. Yes.
First, first of all, statistically, this is nationwide statistics, a renovation to a golf course will enhance the revenue approximately twenty percent. Now, that, one would theorize that will wane over time. They, they like to play the new thing, right? We, we all like to go to the new place, right? So, and we understand that, we get it. But we have fallen behind, we continue to fall behind in the quality of our facility, and the standard that today's golfer wants to play on, consequently, we continue, the revenue continues to wane as a result of the lack of play. Now, there's other, you, I think you and I've had some discussion about this. There are other factors that enter into that. Golf nationwide is, is an industry that's not in great shape. Too many golf courses built, not enough growth of the game in the early two thousands and late nineties. So, but that is, that trend is beginning to turn around. There are more golf courses that close in the United States every year than open. So, the inventories continue to go down.
Vaughn, can I add something to that?
Yes, sir.
The best, the best retirement job I had when I retired from Oklahoma City was at the golf course. And then I had a foolish dream one night and decided to do this, so I had to quit working there. Talk about a group of people that do a lot more with a lot less, and that's the people at that golf course. They're, and you talk about the tournaments, there are people that come from the northwest part of Oklahoma City to have their tournaments at John Conrad Golf Course because of the quality of the golf course. They realize the greens are small, the irrigation's bad, uh, there's a lot of improvements that needs to be done on the golf course. But trust me, even in the condition that it's in right now, and it's, it's, it needs a lot of work, those people that work over there, Larry Denny, Glenn Privat, Mickey, they do so much more with less than anywhere else I've seen. And, and I heard this from people that were bringing their tournaments to John Conrad because of the way that golf course is run. And when these people bring those tournaments to Midwest City, that's an economic development money driver, because they stop someplace to eat, either coming or going. If they're short on gas, they stop in Midwest City. People don't realize having that golf course there brings money to Midwest City, and this is a good investment. And it'll be an investment for years. And the gentleman back there about soccer, this is where the youth goes. And, and you talk about giving these kids something to do during the summer versus letting them going out and just riding around rampant in the neighborhoods. My son grew up at the golf course. It was someplace he could go play every day, and it wasn't a daycare, but it was someplace safe that these kids could go. And it, it's an important, and then we have the second golf course here that a lot of people don't even know about. Those two deals are a huge impact on economics and the quality of life in Midwest City. And like I said, that group of people does a lot with very little over there.
Let me jump in on that real quick to follow up with what Pat had to say. So, um, let me start by saying I do not golf, okay? I may be one of the only lawyers in Oklahoma who does not golf, but my daughter decided in sixth grade she wanted to learn how to play golf. I spent my Saturday at our other golf course, Hidden Creek. Our Elks Lodge sponsored a junior tournament, a skillset tournament for kids anywhere from what you could call pee-wees all the way up through sixteen-year-olds. We had young men and young women from Midwest City, from Oklahoma City, from Edmund, from Choctaw, from Carl Albert School, from Midwest City Schools, all up there together playing. The Elks sponsored it, it was at no cost to the kids, they had a cookout afterwards at the Elks Lodge, you know? And it's amazing, y'all, um, I've heard a lot of people talk down about the idea of putting money into our golf course, okay? Um, when I'm out there at Hidden Creek, you know, um, it's, it's a no-frills deal. I mean, it's not like, you know, it's, it's the lush picture that you see on TV, but there are a lot of kids out there, there's a lot of interest in there, there's a lot of families out there. And for every kid that was out there, there was at least one, and usually two, parents with each of those kids. Now granted, the Elks were gracious enough to put on a cookout, so maybe not everybody ate in Midwest City that day, but the more and more types of tournaments that we can have out at our golf course, once again, brings in revenue. And, um, it's, it's a situation where, you know, Mr. Sullivan, and I, I'm not saying this disparaging at all, but when you talk about the nineteen-seventies, I'm on model, you know, I'm a nineteen-seventies model human being, I could use a, a Renault myself. But, um, some of the pieces of equipment that we had out there even at Hidden Creek, I mean, it's, it's clearly showing its age. You know, it's getting it done, but maybe it's kinda limping along. And so, I, I mean, you know, for my two cents worth, also being a citizen, I, I just wanna say it's something that I think we need, and it's, and it's a positive place to put an investment in, so.
John Conrad is also the home course for three middle schools and two high schools as well. So it's a very important facility for the quality of our, uh, sports programs here in the city of Midwest City.
And a current PGA player.
Uh, thirty thousand tee-offs last year from John Conrad. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to bypass you, Fred, I'm sorry, buddy. We'll, uh, we'll, 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 we'll discuss that. Well, if you can identify that person with that checkbook. It's hidden.
It's a, it's a secret, it's right over here off, yeah, Midget Meadows.
It's the old nine-hole. The old nine-hole, over on.
The, the official signage says Hidden Creek. The affectionate name for it is Midget Meadows, I understand, yes, sir. Yes, sir? Well, officially, that's what the sign says over here on Midwest Boulevard, so just.
Yeah, Hiawatha, go ahead. Oh, they get offended if you call it, it's not frisbee golf, it's disc golf. There's no restriction to, to play in any park in Midwest City. Well, we're, we're, we're trying to do that, Hiawatha. All right, are there any more questions in regard to the GO bond? Yes, ma'am? Well, a, and again. And, and they do, they do utilize that money to improve, make improvements over there. And also, uh, if we did not have an entity to help us run those, then we would have to hire full-time employees to do that. And that's an additional cost to you. They are able to step in, run the tournaments, do all the things that they need to do to run a soccer club without any assistance from the city other than some routine maintenance. So that's the trade-off. And, if we didn't have that, we had it in the same thing, we had the same thing with, uh, baseball. Uh, the YMCA's now running our baseball program. If we didn't have that, then we would have to hire bodies with a salary, benefits, and all that comes with that to run those programs. So that's the trade-off for you as a taxpayer. No, ma'am, they do. They, they have that facility out on Fifteenth Street right now. They contracted with us to run that. We didn't have the teams to field this year, or this summer. Where hopefully, we'll have the, the, for Fall Ball. But yes, ma'am, they do, they have that facility at Fifteenth. They do. Any other questions? Oh, Fred, you're killing me, brother. He's not here. No, he never came. I called him Reed, I was kidding. Fred? Well, i- if I change it up, if, or, or, or if we as collective body change it up, it costs you more money. If we compress that, if we compress that into a fifteen-year bond, rather than, rather than the way we're doing it, it's gonna increase the millage rate. So, but, we're going to have, this is gonna jumpstart us in the ability to ensure that we program from here on out the money that we need to do the upgrades. Well, there, it's constantly being upgraded, constantly. Well. What, what, what do you want us to do? You want us just to unplug and go back? If we, i-. Hey Greg? You're hiding. If we compress this, i- i- if we compress it, it will cost us more money.
It's just like, there's, there's no difference in buying a car. You, if you put it on a five-year note, you got a lower monthly payment, you're paying more in interest, no doubt. If you go three years, can you afford the payments? If, I mean, I'm sitting back here licking my chops, I'd like you to add about twenty million, I get paid on how much you issue. So, add the soccer fields, add everything. I mean, if you, but if, and if you went to fifteen mills the first year, you could do that. But currently, trying to maintain a, a soft blow to the taxpayer at ten mills, it takes twenty-five years to stretch that debt out. So, that's why it's done that way. If you look at that sheet, if you wanna compress it to fifteen, all of those, all of those payments that first year go up by probably about, uh, sixty percent, maybe seventy percent? Cause you're contracting ten years off, that's how much the payments would go up. So, it was a, it's a balancing act, and you're not alone, every community faces that. You want taxpayers, you're balancing out to what they can afford or what they will approve, and then how long you have to go out in the projects. So, that's the answer to the question, you're right, you're paying a. But. But here's what you do, in, in our opinion, they were, they faced a lot of issues over the years, I've been around for a long time. What you do now is you don't let it go that long. You start in ten years when this pays down, and you start doing a little bit different with your management. You start replacing things on a shorter timeframe, and you level it in. But, but this is catching you up in such a way that, without really putting some damage to, I mean, making it stressful on a lot of people for their taxes, this is, this is the easiest way to do it right now, and this is a catch-up.
Does that answer your question, Fred? Okay. Well, ladies and, ladies and gentlemen, everybody's eyes are starting to gloss over. So I'm gonna take that as a clue from, that's what we call a clue in police work. And it's probably time to call this to an end. Uh, first, I wanna thank you for being here. This has been good dialogue, this is what we need, and we need more of it in community government. Uh, community government is where it's at, we're not insulated from our constituents, we're face-to-face. And, and the input that we get from you is valuable. And we will utilize that and, and formulate our plan. Again, we're looking at an August twenty-eighth, uh, election date, uh, on this, and, uh, and I hope, and I pray, that, uh, you will find it in your heart to, uh, to, uh. And, uh, and I hope and I pray that, uh, you will find it in your heart to, uh, to, uh, approve all of these measures. And, uh, with all that being said, you guys have a good night. Thank you for being here.